I now call the order of the business of February 24th, 2015. Madam Secretary, will you please take your role?
Sure. Nedapigian.
Present.
Kenneth Behren.
Here.
Thomas Berry.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton, absent. Margaret Horvath.
Here.
Joseph Kozinski.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. I'd like to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Nedapigian.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business is approval of the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
By Councilman Kozinski.
Support.
Second by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, number four, approve of the minutes for A, the minutes of the regular meeting of February 10th, 2015.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Berry.
Motion to approve the minutes of February 10th, 2015.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, number six, fund transfers and current claims, and we also need to, on 6-4, have the amount changed to $1,701. Also, 6-23, we will refer that back to the administration. There was taxes on the gas bills.
Mr. Chair.
So we have a corrected.
Councilman Berry.
Motion to approve current claims 6-1 through 6-28, along with the motion to make the adjustments as noted.
At 6-4.
6-4. For seven, was it 7,000?
$1,701, it should be.
$1,701.
And 6-23, refer back to the administration.
6-23, refer back to the administration.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Councilman Kozinski.
That would make the claims numbering 1 through 27 since they were referred back.
Correct. Well, they're still numbered with the exclusion of 6-27.
There's a corrected copy, 1 through 1/20 to 27.
Any discussion? Yeah, we have corrected copies, yeah. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, number seven, considerations of bids, 7A, tabulation of bids of ADA unisex restroom improvements at the Berwind Senior Center, Community and Economic Development Director, Ayman.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Nedapigian.
I move to concur with CEDD Ronald J. Ayman, the director's request to authorize him to accept the low bid as part of 7A from the Qualified Construction Corporation on the amount of $16,775 to renovate the restrooms at Berwind Center, also to authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the attached contract between the city and the contractor.
Support.
And authorize the return of the bid bonds?
Don't say anything about the bid bonds, but we shall do that as a matter of course.
Okay, and support by Councilman Kozinski. Is that okay for the bid bonds?
Yes, sure. It was constant.
It was a constant.
Yeah.
I heard one coming this way. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number eight, reports from the mayor, 8A, from Mayor Pletko, letter of engagement and contracting with RMS associated regarding telecommunications consulting and project management.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move, council concur the request of Mayor Dan Pletko for the city to enter into a contract between RMS and the City of Dearborn Heights and to approve the payments as outlined in the contract for phases one and two, all of this detailed according to item 8A.
8.
Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I am second.
Second by Councilwoman Horvath. Discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
I don't know much about this. I know that the executive assistant brought it to our attention last week saying that it would be on the agenda this week, but I thought this would go to a study session so that maybe we could, unless you all know about it and I don't, I don't know the details of this.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I might. We used RMS the last time we got the phone. Her expertise, and in fact, I think what said more than anything else was when we introduced Doug Felkamp to her, he was so impressed that she's going to get an offer from the City of Dearborn to consult with them. She's going to save us much more in dollars than $7,500. But we're kind of anxious to, because we've worked with her, we thought that the council would be in agreement, is that it's essential we get this first phase done because the grant we have that'll do the interconnection with all the communication and then we'll be able to build our computer software. So this part has to come first before we can do the second part. But I think it said more than anything when Doug and the group in Dearborn was so impressed and they said, "We'd like you to make a proposal. We want to use you for the Dearborn system."
I'm fine with that.
Sure. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 8B, from Mayor Pletko, appointment to the Board of Review.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that council concur with the mayor's appointment of Ms. Lynn Killian of Shatterlawn for a two-year term expiring January 2017, 2017, as a replacement for Mr. Rick Coogan on the Board of Appeals, Board of Review, I'm sorry. Mr. Coogan was originally appointed but cannot serve due to his position on the planning and Board of Appeals as outlined in 8B.
Support.
Second by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Board of Review, I don't mean to discredit the candidate. Will she be going or be attending a class?
Yes. Well, I take that back. I had her discuss because one of the questions she had was what was involved and everything.
Can you come to the microphone that way that everyone can hear? Thanks.
The class was back at the end of January, so she wasn't able to attend, but I did give her all the information from the class to review. There was a packet with everything that she would need.
And you're going to give her background, you and Wendy, so they're going to work with her.
I'll talk with her. She's a former small business owner and active in the community and homeowner.
Community activist.
Community activist.
A great person. I'm going to tell you, she will not run for elective office, but I'm going to tell you, I have for years tried to encourage her because I think she has a lot to contribute to Dearborn Heights. So she's told me no, but she couldn't tell me no for this particular appointment. I think it's great having her and maybe we can get her involved, not from an elected standpoint, but in other things.
Sure. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 8C, from Mayor Pletko, new street lighting in the River Oaks subdivision.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
Can we, I don't know about the other council members, would there be a possibility of putting this to a study session and let's talk about this? Because one of the things that I would like the administration to do is, within the last few years, this is the second location that we're putting lights in through DTE. It's going to start, it already has started, okay? What about me? So I would like to talk about this and then maybe the city could put, the administration put a plan together on other areas that might need lighting, not right now, but who's next on the list or, you know, number one and that kind of thing. I'd like to see that, too.
Yeah, one of the things, Councilwoman, that we do currently, we get onesie-twosie, I'll say, on a block, and usually Mr. Zimmer is able, or I, he'll ask me for approval. It's under the threshold, so those go in. What I'll notice a pattern is where you get involvement of Mark Paronello in that unit and then one of the items, and he saw in the River Oaks that there's areas where it's completely dark. And so as a suggestion was made, and we already have because the council had previously approved a project over in Telegraph Joy Road area.
Military Hill.
Military Hills. And then there were about $5,000 worth of new lights that the problem was the resident was renting. And the resident was, "Oh, yeah, you can put the wire, run it over the house if you want." And the owner said, "No, no, I don't want any wires on the property." But so consequently, or people signed and then moved and by the time DTE came in, the new owners said, "No." So we've had on credit about $5,000. And so Deborah King came to me almost simultaneously with the subdivision saying that the police department's recommending more lights and a couple other of the courts and stuff. And so it was kind of a match, and that's how this one developed. But the big thing that DTE would like to have us explore, and I was going to do this after the budget session, season, was they would like, and we could go to LED lights and throughout the community. The one thing I did not like is that there's a great price reduction originally with LED lights, and DT has just filed a motion with the Public Service Commission, and those LED prices are going up like over $100 a year. So that would completely nullify some of the advantage with the mercury vapor lights that are prevalent through the community. So, but I'm willing to proceed.
So I guess my question then is, I'd like to know how the rest of the council feels, but did this come up because the PD was having a problem over there?
Their recommendation, because it's, this could not get cured by having people turn their porch lights on.
Right.
This is a bigger difficulty.
Right.
There's areas in River Oaks that there's just not homes and things, and there were, there's been enough incidents of police matter, rims, cars, and so the recommendation for Mark Paronello was that improving the lighting in those areas will be a deterrent for crime. And so that was the main motivation in this particular area.
Do you have 8D, 8C there? Then I have a question.
Yep.
If you look at the map, you see the two at the lower right-hand side, their cul-de-sac type things?
Yep.
Does that, there's a five, number five and number six, which indicates a light is going to be put there.
Yes.
Does that mean that that's the only light on that cul-de-sac?
Yes. It's completely dark. When you go by, there are no lights in there except for the house.
What are those little dots next, like next to that cul-de-sac? Like, you know, in the middle, between the two cul-de-sacs, there's one, two, three, four, five little dots. What is that?
I wonder if those are poles.
Those are islands.
In the yards.
They're what?
No, I think she's talking about these.
Yeah.
Those are poles for servicing the homes.
Oh, okay.
And that then tells DT where they can get a lead to put a light in.
Okay.
I will tell you what, I know Rouge Court certain is pitch black when you go down there.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I think there's an apparent need for an in-depth discussion, so I'd refer this to a study session. I have a host of questions specifically related to some pronouncements in the charter with regard to lighting and the investment in infrastructure as opposed to just paying the light bill. If we come up with a series of standards by which a subsequent inquiry will come to us, we'll measure that inquiry against the standards for moving forward. And we're near budget time, so we can budget appropriately for those issues. I would also like to see the police department bring in their demonstration of the activities of activity that they have accumulated with regard to some strength in announcing who would be second in line or third in line as to where some additional lights might be coming in. I know that that information is available to us, but all said and done, there needs to be a rigid policy structured so that we can move from one area to another. We're not, I don't think we're yet in the position to afford a massive infusion of lighting that the entire city would be accommodated. The reality of it is that the configuration of the city is we have, best way I would want to put it, is negative intrusion from various sides, Jaw Road, Engster Road, Detroit, and maybe a little bit from Taylor. All of this information collated into a single structure of policies and procedures as to moving forward with lighting will then permit an inquiry for additional lighting in a given area to be followed.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Nedapigian.
I studied the map and it, not having gone there at night, I mean, there's probably no question it needs a couple lights, but my question's a little different. I think we should ask our planning consultant who's made a master plan, and I'm sure in the master plan, they may have made a judgment. There might be some community standard in the United States or even in the state of Michigan as to how many lumens should be put out in residential area versus commercial versus industrial and find out what we should be doing. And if we need lighting throughout the city of Dearborn Heights, we should be improving it as time goes along from one section to another. But right now, we don't know what, I'm doubtful as to we know what the minimum is or whether we have it. Maybe we're negligent in many places.
Mr. Chair.
But I'm sure.
I don't think, that part, I think we know somewhere in the archives somewhere because if you recall, I'm sure the chair does, I don't know if anybody else was here at the time, there was a man on the other side of Warren, I think, and the light was in his bedroom and we all went out there and they had it tested. Detroit Edison went out, the whole nine yards, and everything that we did, that light was perfect. It wasn't doing anything that it shouldn't have been doing. So I think that part we're on board with.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Councilman Berry.
I really think this is being overanalyzed. I think what you have in front of you is a layout from DTE Energy telling you exactly where they would put lights. You have the support of the police department that tells you, yes, we need lights based on past history in the area. I think the only thing left for you to do is take a ride out there and see if you'd live in those areas with no lighting. It's pretty easy to me. I mean, I don't know why we need to overkill this. Here we are in River Oaks again, making an issue about the living conditions in River Oaks. It's a great community. These people spend a lot of money on their homes. I think property values have gone up significantly there, and every time River Oaks comes up, the council seems to want to put their thumb on it and say, "No, let's conduct a study. Let's get the police department in. Let's call in the federal government. By the way, let's see if we can get General Petraeus in here to see if it's worthy of it." You got it from DTE. They're telling you that this area warrants lights. We have the money for it. It's $16,000. It's not a lot of money.
Okay, that's my next question, Mr. Chairman. And I'm really sorry that you said that, Tom, but you know what? I knew you were going to say that.
Okay.
I knew as soon as I questioned.
I wasn't questioning you, honestly.
I understand, but you see, I have a lot of notes.
What you brought to the table, I was going to say, I support that.
And I support the area like I support every other area in the city. My other question is now, does this money come out? Now, I know we have a streetlight account. Now, does that, because to me, I think this is what I would call capital improvement because it's not streetlight. It is a streetlight, but we're building something there. We're putting more than, we're doing more than just taking care of the streetlight. So does the money for this, and while it isn't significant, come out of the streetlight budget?
Yes. Yeah, generally throughout the year, for instance, like you might have a motorist run over a street lamp and it's got to be replaced or some thing of that sort, for instance. If there's a decision to put streetlights along, and there was recently along Ford Road where it was dark from Evergreen, that's the account it comes out of. So we found out that we were more efficient in our utilization. I think some of it has been DTE, there's numerous lights that are out. Some of the system is really old. It's, it works in the same way that when I was a little kid, then the Christmas lights, and when one would go out, the whole thing. So it's not uncommon on some of our lights along the streets, people will call in or I'll see that there's eight lights out, and they'll go, "Wow, all eight of them went out at one time," but they're kind of.
And that's in series.
Yeah, they're in the series, and so when one goes out, all eight go out. When those situations happen, we go back to DTE and we say, "Hey, we're not paying for something because we got eight lights here. We didn't have any lights for the last three months." So the bill gets reduced. So we have additional monies to fund this in this particular year and still be good. And then on an ongoing, and we're using the $5,000 credit that was in the other subdivision that we can't get the right of ways, and on an ongoing basis, the additional price is going to be annual operating $1,325, and we feel that is, can be done within the budget.
So with that $5,000, we're actually looking at maybe an $11,000 outlay?
No, 16,535.
Well, they said they reduced it from 20.
Yeah, 20,509.
Yeah, to 16. You're right.
To 16, and then we have the five from the other fund.
No, the.
No, was that the reduction?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Okay.
We have no motion on the floor.
Can I make a motion?
Councilman Berry.
Mr. Chair. Motion on the floor, but there apparently was no support.
I didn't hear a motion. I'd like to move that city council concur.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Hey, I thought you started with discussion.
Yes. I said, I proposed a motion that we go to a study session and went on to explain why. And all we need is a second to going to a study session with 8C. Is there support?
Is there a second?
I tend to second it, but I think, I think I've had most of my questions answered here. I don't know.
We can do two things, too. We approve this, and if you still want to talk about this, we can put it on.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I like that idea, and we can talk about street lighting in a sit-down session.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to.
There's no second on.
I assume Marge was seconding this.
No.
Motion? Okay. Well, then, Councilman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item 8C as outlined. Second.
Second by Councilman Coniston.
Mr. Chair.
Is there any discussion? Councilman Berry.
I apologize. I'd like to further that up with a discussion, a special study session set up to discuss street lighting throughout the city.
Okay.
Support.
Right. That's what I was going to say that was missing.
Okay, second by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I just want to clarify the statement that I made earlier. This is a precedent-setting issue, and I will somewhat guarantee you that we will get inquiries from interested citizens who are experiencing darkness in their immediate neighborhood. So we have to have the guidelines structured in a manner so that we can proceed as to who gets the attention the second time around. I have never had any intention to single out any part of the community with regard to being negative toward their needs and desires. One of the most important things that struck me in this issue is that we're talking about $16,000. If anything happened to one of our great men in blue with the absence of light, I wouldn't be able to sleep the rest of my days. So it's a good investment with regard to a protective mechanism for those people who are allowing us to sleep at night.
Good point. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, number nine, reports from city official, 9A, from Recreation Director Gribble, budget transfer from SMART Revenues to Richard A. Young Center Capital Outlay.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Nedapigian.
I move to concur with Ken Gribble, Parks and Recreation Director's budget transfer request as a capital outlay budgeted in the 2013-14 Richard A. Young Recreational Center that we must transfer from account 101 as indicated in 9A, SMART Revenue, $4,185, transfer to account 101 as indicated in 9A to the Richard Young Capital Outlay Committee in the amount of $4,185 as illustrated in detail in 9A.
Support.
Second by Councilman Berry. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 9B, from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, Telegraph Road Water Main Recommendation of Contract Award.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the council concur with the Wade Trim Letter dated February 12th to amend the 2014 Water Main Improvement Contract with DND Water and Sewer for the Telegraph Road Water Main Improvement. To order for $1,227,665. That amends the contract with the city that DND has on water and sewer, and also request a, is this two motions?
You can put it in the same one, I believe.
And also request a construction engineering budget to be approved for Wade Trim Associates in the amount of $100,000.
Second.
This was approved in the 2014-15 Water and Sewer Budget.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, number 11, Ordinance Resolutions 11A, First Read of Proposed Ordinance H-1504 Regarding Establishment of a Watershed Stewards Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move we concur with City Attorney Gary Miatki and have motion, I'm sorry, Ordinance H-15-4 establishing the Watershed Stewards Commission considered read for the first time.
Second.
Second by Councilman Nedapigian. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I'm Gabby tonight, am I?
No, not yet.
Not yet? We're almost done. I have a question. How is it determined, like this one, the mayor is going to appoint this commission? How is it determined that the mayor or the council or the commissions themselves appoint people? How is that determined?
It's actually a matter of how you put it into the ordinance establishing the actual commission. And I figured this one probably would be best to end up having with mayoral appointments.
Okay. All right. All right. I just wondered. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
By way of background, the way this came up, so the Watershed Stewards was originally started under Mayor Canfield, Ruth Canfield, by Kurt Heisey and myself. And the current chairs, co-chairs, wanted to have a permanent position for the students that come through, and so they're a senior, they're an honor student, they come to the meetings, and then they go off to college. And we discovered that the Watershed Stewards needed a more formal structure. There were, our bylaws and everything all have to be adopted. So, Barb Gorka and Steve Roberts, who's here today, the co-chairs, put a lot of time and effort into this.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. 11B, First Reader of Proposed Ordinance H-1505 Regarding Alcoholic Liquor Retail License and Retail Sales.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Berry?
I'd like to recommend that this go be referred to a study session. Well, it needs to be read for the first time and go to a study session. Am I correct in assuming that?
That's correct.
I'd like to, I'd move that the ordinance regarding alcohol liquor retail license and retail sales be considered read for the first time and referred to a study session.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion? I know we're having discussion with our council, Gary Miyaki. There's been a lot of changes made.
Yeah, this is a considerable rewrite of this whole provision, and actually, it came about in terms of the idea because I was representing a private party with regard to a liquor license in another community and realized that they were doing some things that are not right, and realized we really did not have a mechanism in place to deal with some of the issues. So, that's why I strongly recommend that this be done, but I think the council needs to be comfortable with how some of the things are done, kind of administratively, whether or not there be a commission to review some of this stuff, or just all be done by the council itself.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Number 13, New Business Business License Renewal for Wholesale Retailers, Inc., 4413 South Beach Daily.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Pagan.
I move to approve of the business license for Wholesale Retailers, Incorporated, located at 4413 South Beach Daily.
As outlined in 13A?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. Second by Councilman Kozinski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. This ends our regular portion of the meeting, but before I ask for the council, I just kind of want to apologize to Bill Zimmer for the last meeting. I meant to congratulate you and your crews, and please pass this on to them. I think they did, even though we got complaints, they did a fantastic job with that snow that we had. And people have to realize, someone's got to be first, and someone's going to be last, but that was a lot of snow, and it, you know, I was very pleased at what I saw, especially that I get around the city, so...
I think you did a great job.
Yeah. Thank you, and pass that on. Is there anything to come from any of the council members?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Horvath?
I see one of the gentlemen from the Assessors Department is here. I just have a question. How is everything going with our contracted person, and is it moving along?
Can you come to the mic, just so, because then it gets picked up on the...
Everything's been going well. I think Wendy's working out really good.
Good.
We mailed out the notices, so homeowners will be receiving them this week with their new values for 2015.
Okay, good. Okay. And the other, the only other thing I have is, I got a call from, I got a call from somebody, a lady that had called the Building Department and talked to a gal named Sally, and had nothing but rave reviews about how she handled the situation, the information she gave her, and kudos to Sally, so pass that along to her. And by the way, how's Mohammed doing?
Good.
Is he back at work?
He's calling all over again.
Oh, okay. That's it.
Okay, good. Anyone else from the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Constance?
I get information from the Internal Revenue Service, and they notified all the people on their email that there's a scam going around where you'll get a call from somebody, they'll say they're from the IRS, they'll say that they're auditing you, and they'll ask for personal information, your social security number, date of birth, address, even bank account numbers, and they caution everyone, and we always know you give out no personal information over the phone.
As a follow-up to that, the IRS only notifies taxpayers by mail. They do not notify taxpayers by a phone call, so if you get a phone call, it is not the IRS. And the other question is, if you were the IRS, wouldn't you have your date of birth, social security number, and all that?
Exactly.
Absolutely. Don't give that information out, but good point, Councilman. I totally agree.
Yep. Anything else from the council? Mayor, do you have anything?
Two things. One is Bob Bancrap is doing the filming today because Angie had a little accident. We hope that she will be back soon, but she did take quite a tumble, so keep her in your prayers. The other item is, last Thursday, I had the invite and was very pleased to go to the 95th anniversary of the League of Women Voters. And it was a very nice, well-attended event in the Dearborn, Dearborn Heights. League of Women Voters do a very great job. The information they give out for us who are voting, the guides, and then the Candidates' Night they hold, and the other great things they do, it was very, just a super-nice event. And once again, thank, I want to thank them for inviting me, and congratulations, 95th year. The one thing I will share with everybody is, look at all of the contributions that women would have been able to make, and it was only within the last few years that we've taken their contribution. For a long time, a large part of our population could not participate, and who knows what we lost in that particular process, but just an observation.
Anything else? I know the city clerk asked me to announce that the packets are ready for anyone that wants to run for the council seats this year, and the new petitions, it's something new. I haven't seen them, but are in. They just came in, and that's what he was waiting for. So, at this time, does anyone have anything they wish to bring before us as far as announcements? Any announcements, things happening in the city?
Why, hello, council chair and mayor. Just wanted to mention a couple of items. First off, our continuing series on the fundamentals of electricity is in full swing. Join us the second and fourth Mondays of each month at 7:00 PM at Carolyn Candy Library through May 11th as groups in grades three to five learn about electricity and electronics. Engineers from IEEE will be working with children in small groups. Registration required in person or call 313-791-3800. Next, join us Wednesday, March 3rd at John F. Candy Junior Library at 6:30 PM, and March 10th at Carolyn Candy Library at 7:00 PM for our latest adventure by our animal capers puppet group. Renowned inventor Tiberius T. Tiger has agreed to do two shows to demonstrate his latest inventions. Tiberius, who has more patents than Edison and Tesla combined, and writes an ongoing article on popular Meow Canics, will be trying his inventions on a host of new friends, so come on out and take a gander. Also, Wednesday, March 11th at 7:00 PM at Carolyn Candy Library, join Bob Hartwig, oh, sorry, Harding, professional storm chaser, as he describes his experience chasing down tornadoes in West Michigan. Bob shares insights as to how storms form, what sets ordinary storms apart from tornado makers, and how to stay safe during severe weather. Finally, proud to announce April 18th at Carolyn Candy Library at 11:00 AM, and April 25th at John F. Candy Junior Library at noon, we will be hosting a pair of open houses to celebrate the 10th anniversary of the new buildings. We will be having some live entertainment, book giveaways, food trucks, cake, popcorn, popcorn makers, database demonstrations, inflatable lobster courses, card drives, and more. For more details, go to our website off the city page, or call 313-791-3800, and some invitations will be going out in that next couple of weeks. So, that's all for now. Thank you for your time, and see you at the library.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Ten years.
Yeah, it's hard to believe.
Yeah, I mean, really, it doesn't seem that long.
It does.
How much of the bond is paid off?
Yeah. Anyone else have any announcements, things happening in the city? Okay, then, at this point, if anyone has any questions or concerns, please direct them to me. If you would like to talk to another council member, the mayor, department head, et cetera, let me know, and I will ask he or she if they would like to respond. Councilman Berry will keep track of time. You have three minutes. After, you give your name, street, and the city you reside in. He will hold up this 15-second sign that will give you time to wrap it up, and after the three minutes, he'll hold up the stop sign. Does anyone else have anything they wish to bring before us?
Good evening. Ray Musk at Havelock Street. About the light situation, does anyone know that DTE's putting a lot of poles down in my neighborhood? John Daly, Beach Daly, or John Daly, Cherry Hill area?
They've been replacing back where I am, poles in the yards, a lot of them.
Oh, yeah? Well, I thought maybe they were putting lights up or something. They're putting poles down everywhere, so is that what that's for?
It's all for replacement, and then I also received from Madeline a call, and she told me, I think this is a result of a lawsuit that's going on in West Bloomfield, but she said that they're going to be doing some significant tree trimming, and she wanted to come in and present and make the local elect officials. And I told her that as you get closer, it might be something else that the council might want to hear, and so that we're aware of where they're going to be doing that tree trimming, so... But as far as I know, she told me nothing other than that. I mean, they are putting up the smart meters. They got a lot of stuff going on.
But they're really dropping off a lot of poles everywhere in my neighborhood.
Yeah, it's, they're all in regards to replacement.
Okay. One other question from 61 Transfer Fund to Bell Tire, not because it's Bell Tire. I was looking at the work order, and there's two different work orders for that right there, and my question is, they didn't put down any kind of vehicle. They just have six tires, actually 12 tires, six at $90.32, and six at $412. What kind of vehicle is that?
Loose. They're loose tires.
Oh, they're just for spare?
They're stocking.
DPW?
Yes.
Because I know they stock them.
Okay, I didn't...
And as they need them.
And then right on that same, with that same one, they had another work order for four straps, four clips, four keepers, but there's no other explanation, and I didn't know what that was.
That's city inventory.
Yeah.
Inventory of what? I mean, four clips, four keepers, four straps, $50. I don't know what those are for. That's what it says. Four straps, four clips, four keepers, $50.
If I could see it.
Here, Tony.
$49.99.
Is it for brakes?
No, it's for the...
There's no vehicle, you know, charge to it or anything.
Electrical.
Flip it over to the other one at $49.
I was guessing electrical, but I didn't know what was tied to a vehicle.
If you look in the comment section, it's a sensor. It's a band with a sensor attached to it. I don't know if you have the item in front of you, but if you look in the comment section, it tells you that it's a band with a sensor.
Yeah, but it didn't have a vehicle attached to it. That's, I didn't...
It may be just on a loose wheel, because when they replace that, they're going to...
Okay, so it's the, like, the low pressure?
Like a low-pressure sensor.
Okay, all right. That's, if they're loose tires, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thanks. Anyone else wish to bring anything before us?
Good evening, Chairman. I'm saying from Hanover Street. Well, basically, every winter, whenever it snows, we're having difficulties with the DPW for some reason, and I know you just gave them that they did a great job. Eventually, I've emailed several councilmen, and I emailed the mayor, too, about how they're doing in front of my house, throughout the whole entire neighborhood. My whole neighborhood gets cleaned out, just in front of my house, then dump in the whole snow. There is no way for me to get out of my house. I have to call in and wait at about five, six hours later, probably seven to eight, for them to send in a different truck to come clean it up. Why? How can we solve it? I don't know.
You had a different situation, didn't you? On a turn, or?
He sits at the end of the block, and it's very, it's very difficult to plow the entire neighborhood and not have somewhere to put that snow, so when they push it, they try to push it as far back as they can. He called me and told me of his situation. I called DPW, I called Mr. Zimmer, and in a matter of about three or four hours, he was able to get somebody down there. The problem was, is we had so much snow, and they were working throughout the neighborhood, trying to get everything clear as much as they could. I think the disappointing part about this was, I know that you called me, and I was hoping that we could resolve it that day, and it sounded like we did, but doggone it, wouldn't you know it, two or three days later, it was in the newspaper slamming us about how poor we did on the snow.
Anybody says, even if you go back to the newspaper, I can bring you the article of the newspaper, I said exactly in the newspaper, you guys were able to clean it up later on the day. It was a different guy who came out on the newspaper and said you guys took two to three days. But eventually, for these snow plows, there was probably about 10 feet from my driveway where they can push them up a little bit.
And he knows that, and I know that he's addressed that. It's being able to do it with that plow at that time. I don't think that they're back there trying to, trying to prevent you from getting out of your house. I really don't think that's the situation. Unfortunately, it's where you're at and the amount of snow that they're pushing.
Well, I hope we can find a way to solve the issue.
Thank you.
And another question, is there any answer about the flood claims that happened in August 2014?
We're going to have a meeting on the 17th here at 7:00, which is open to the public, and we will have people here to explain kind of what happened and what's going on, so you're more than welcome to come on the 17th of March at 7:00.
Well, eventually, we have gotten some news from city members that there was a final decision that was made, and our neighborhood throughout the south end is not covered through anything with these flood claims.
There's no official...
Would you talk into the microphone? It's hard to hear you.
Official decision that's been made yet.
Well, basically, Mona Eamon gave me an answer based on the information she got from Christie, and, which is the assistant of the mayor and the city attorney. She said, your area is not going to be covered through the claims. There's only three houses that will be covered in the city.
You know, what I would recommend is, unfortunately, they don't, or she doesn't speak on behalf of the city, and like the council chair recommended, you come in on the 17th and listen to what is being shared with the rest of the city, and at that time, I'm sure you'll be able to hear something a little bit more conclusive, but I don't think that those are the facts at this time.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to bring anything before us? Seeing none?
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
I'll second.
Councilman Berry? I made motion adjourned, second by Councilman Pagan. All in favor of the motion, aye?